Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of August 29, 2022. For viewers watching at home, some members of the public may be participating via video conference or teleconference. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do you begin?
The Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Bus.
Present.
Commissioner Lanson.
Here.
Commissioner Link. Absent. Vice Chair McMahon.
Present.
And Chair Newman is absent.
Thank you. Tonight, we have with us Deputy Community Development Director John Dugan. Mr. Dugan, are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
No, there are no supplemental items for the agenda, no continuances.
Thank you. Public comments. Now is the time for a public comment. At this time, any person may address the Commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on this evening's agenda. Should the Commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a future agenda. Anyone who'd like to speak under public comments must fill out a speaker card in chambers or click Request to Speak on the agenda to receive instructions before the public comments portion of the agenda is called. The speaker's remarks should be addressed to the Commission as a whole and not to an individual commissioner or staff member. Unless otherwise provided by the Commission, speakers are limited to five minutes. The screen will show you the remaining time that you have. Item number six, our consent calendar. We have the consent calendar with the minutes of the June 8, 2022 Special Planning Commission meeting and the June 13, 2022 Regular Planning Commission meeting. Are there any comments? Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments or a motion to approve the minutes?
My only question is, are we approving them collectively, or do we want to do it separately?
I believe it's collectively unless somebody has a comment about one in particular.
I would move we approve both minutes.
Any comments?
I agree.
Secretary, can you call for a vote, please?
Commissioner Bus.
Aye.
Commissioner Lanson.
Aye.
Vice Chair McMahon.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Commissioner Link and Chair Newman absent.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on to item 7A. Will the clerk please open the public hearing? Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A, Precise Plan of Design, PPD 2022-70291, an Underground Utility Waiver, UUW 2022-70385, to allow encroachment into the 25% or greater natural slope for the construction of a single-family residence, including the waiver of the requirement to underground the overhead utility lines, and find that the project is exempt from SEQA. Located at 273 South Skyline Drive, the applicant is Julie Moses. Thank you. Let's see. Presenting on behalf of staff is Associate Planner Will Chua.
Good evening, Vice Chair, members, commissioners. As mentioned, the request is to allow encroachment within 25% or greater natural terrain for the construction of a single-family dwelling and the waiver of the requirement to underground existing utilities. The project is located on the south side of the 101 freeway. This is the aerial photo for the proposed project site. The project site, as you can see, is currently vacant. There are several single-family homes that were approved in 2020 by this commission, and the location is adjacent to it, and the other houses were on top of the hill. The Planning Commission review is required because the request is for encroachment within 25% or greater slope. The Underground Utility Waiver does not require Planning Commission approval, but it's being presented to the Planning Commission as well. The subject site is an undeveloped lot located on the north side of Skyline Drive, about 650 feet from Willow Lane. It is Zoned RE with a minimum lot size of 13,000 square feet. It is rectangular with a dimension of 206 feet deep by 74 feet wide. The total square footage for the lot is 682 square feet. There are no oak trees located on the subject site, however, there is an oak tree on the adjacent side, adjacent property that will not be affected by this development. The terrain on the side slopes up from front to the back of the property. On the first 70 feet along the front of the property, the slope is less than 25%, and beyond that, most of the slope exceeds 25% natural slope. So over half of this parcel is within natural slope that exceeds 25%. The project was originally approved in 2017 by the commission. It is the exact same application, and it is before the commission tonight because the applications were expired. And after that, some residences were approved, as I mentioned earlier, five single-family homes adjacent to this property. Those approved sizes were between 3100 to 4100 square feet. The next slide is a picture of the site looking southwest. The oak tree that I mentioned earlier is at the center of the slide picture. This is a picture of the project site looking northwest. The zoning on the property is an RE, which is consistent with the general plan designation of residential in our land use element. The proposed single-family home is a contemporary style residence that will have three bedrooms, three full bathrooms, and a three-car garage. The footprint for the proposed project is 1,500 square feet and with a total floor area of 25, 40 square feet, including the garage and the second floor. As I mentioned earlier, there are several sites that were approved. There are several houses that were approved, and one is towards the west of the property as well, located on 251 South Skyline, which was approved and constructed, which was approved with a total square footage of 3,100 square feet. Another one next door, which is the house on the aerial shows, that was built in 2,000 with 31, 25 square feet. The height of the proposed structure is 15 feet at the rear and 24'7" at the front, which complies with the municipal code's maximum height limit of 25 feet. This is the elevation plans for the proposed project. As you can see, the house was being proposed to be built to respect the slope as required by our municipal code. Oh, no, I'm sorry, by the Precise Plan of Design Guidelines. The Precise Plan of Design Guidelines is the guideline that the city uses to evaluate projects for residential and institutional projects. As far as the scale, mass, and the height, the project is consistent with the residences in the neighborhood. The building will be stepped to follow the natural contours of the property, as I mentioned earlier. The building materials and colors are compatible with the natural and man-made environment in the area. This is just a table showing the municipal code standards and the proposed. As far as setbacks, rear setbacks, and height, and parking, the project either complies or exceeds the minimum standards. As far as grading is concerned, the applicant is proposing to grade approximately 1,800 square feet of natural grade, that's 25% or greater. There will be an export of 1,300 cubic yards, which is equivalent to 96 truck trips. There will be retaining walls ranging from 6 inches to 5'6" in height, and the proposed driveway is 12.5%. The encroachment on the 25% or greater natural slope is necessary for the construction of single-family dwelling and the installation of the septic system. As far as for brush clearance, the city will require, our fire department requires 100-foot-wide field modification. The construction of the pad and the house will result in off-site brush clearance, which is unavoidable because of the size and the configuration of the lot. The applicant is required to offer brush clearance to adjacent property owners so that the burden of doing brush clearance won't fall on those property owners. As far as the Underground Utility Waiver, there are existing overhead utilities along the front of the property. The municipal code requires that all facilities and overhead utility lines for all the existing facilities and overhead lines be undergrounded for new constructions. However, there's also a provision that allows applicants to file for the waiver, which is what we have in front of you right now. Like I said, Section 7-5.203 allows for waiver if unreasonable and considering certain circumstances. At this point, at this time, the circumstances for this is that the undergrounding is not practical at this point because everybody else in that neighborhood has an overhead utility. All the utilities in the neighborhood is overhead. The proposed project is exempt, qualifies for a Class 3 exemption under SEQA for a single-family residence, and that the no exceptions apply under the exemptions section of SEQA applies to the project. The encroachment into 25% or greater slope is unavoidable. The project is consistent with the 1,000 ox municipal code and the Precise Plan of Design Guidelines. The undergrounding of the existing utility at this point is unreasonable and impractical, and with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve PPD 2022-70291 and UUW 2022-70385 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in this suggested resolution. And staff is available to answer the questions that the commissioner may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chua. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Bus?
You almost answered my question, but I wanted to know, on the property...
You almost answered my question, but I wanted to know, on the property next door that we approved fairly recently, I'm not exactly sure when it was, did we also agree to waive the undergrounding requirement at that property? I couldn't remember.
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bus? I'm sorry, Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Vice Chair Newman. Thank you, Mr. Chua, for your report. You said this is the same application. I just want to make a little clarification, make sure, are all the conditions also the same as was the prior application?
Yes, and I would like to point out that since the approval of this project, there are no municipal code requirement that has been revised to affect the approval of this project.
All right, that takes care of my next question. Beyond that, have you received any comments from neighbors with regard to the application?
No.
And then just as clarification for my own personal point, so if they are not done by what looks like 2025, would they have to come back again to get another renewal?
Not necessarily. What happened here was that the applicant wasn't aware that she was allowed to file for an extension. Our municipal code allows for an extension of two extensions of 18 months each, so they are technically be allowed an approval up to, you know, up to that time.
That's why I was curious, because I was surprised this would come before us, and now that makes sense why. All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, we do have one public comment. It is Yamal Olivia. Are they on Zoom?
I believe the applicant will be.
Oh, that's the applicant, I'm sorry.
No, the applicant will be first, I believe.
Okay. It's not on my script. Okay. Is the applicant here or on Zoom?
Via Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me? Judy is here.
Yes, go ahead.
So, what is your question, please?
Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? This is your opportunity to talk about the project if you want to say anything about it.
I am sorry that my application, which was previously approved, has expired. That's why I am back to doing public hearing again, and I'm sure it's going to be approved
Is that the extent of what you'd like to say tonight?
It's nothing else. It's a beautiful property, vacant lot. I have obtained building permit, which has expired. So that's why I'm doing this all over again.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. If that's all you have to say, are there any questions? No, okay. And we do have one public speaker card. We're going to go to that now. Okay, that would be Yamal Olivia. You have five minutes. I'm sorry, if you want to talk, you need to come to the microphone because we are broadcasting to the general public on the TV. And would you state your name and city of residence once you get there? Either one.
Judy?
Yeah.
Judy is here.
And I just want to say that from my perspective, I approve the project, and I say, let's go, let's prove this. And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Are there any questions of the public speaker? Okay. All right, thank you. Let's see, are there any? Let's see, we will now go back to staff for follow-up comments, questions?
Staff has nothing to add. Thank you.
Commissioners, any more questions? This seems pretty easy, and there's an opportunity for a rebuttal if the applicant wants to rebut anything that was said. I think I'm going to assume that that's a no. Okay, so I will close the public meeting, and I will now open up the floor for discussion and emotion. Commissioner Bus?
Sounds to me that that's just a case of people not understanding their rights, and so it looks like this project will move forward once we give its approval. So with that, I would like to recommend that we approve PPD 2022-70291 and UUW 2022-70385 as recommended by staff.
Okay, are there any comments? All right, can you prepare us for a vote, please?
Commissioner Bus?
Aye.
Commissioner Lanson?
Aye.
Vice Chair McMahon?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Commissioner Link and Chair Newman absent.
Thank you. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the community development department within 10 days. All right, so now we can move on to 7B. Will the clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing having been advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7B Special Use Permit, SUP 2022-70220, to allow a physical therapy office use in an existing 2,508-square-foot tenant lease space located within the M1 industrial zone, and find that the project is exempt from SEQA. Located at 1090 Lawrence Drive, number 3101, the applicant is Ascent Orthopedic Physical
Let's see, thank you. Presenting on behalf of staff is Associate Planner Kendall.
Yes, hello, thank you Chair and members of the planning commission. The item before you tonight. Sorry, I'm getting set up here. The project before you tonight includes a request to approve a special use permit to allow a physical therapy office use in an existing 2,508-square-foot tenant lease space located within the M1 industrial zone, and to find the project to be exempt from SEQA. The project was submitted to the city on March 8th of this year, and on May 26th, a notice of application was mailed to all property owners within 500 feet of the project site in addition to all known interested parties, and a sign was posted on the property. The notice of hearing for this meeting was published and posted on August 15th. To date, staff has not received any correspondence related to the proposed project. The project site is within the Rancho Canejo Industrial Park, also known as Specific Plan 15, and located at 1090 Lawrence Drive. The project site is within the westmost of the three industrial buildings seen here, referred to as the Lawrence Business Center. The underlying development permit, unknown as Planned Development 1132, established the building plotting, parking requirements, setbacks, building heights, and landscaping requirements for the complex in the 1980s. The general plan land use designation for the property is industrial, as I said, and the zone is industrial park M1. A medical or physical therapy office use is allowed in this zone, subject to review and approval of a special use permit, which is before you this evening. The property is located at the southeast corner of Lawrence Drive and Labri Court and is surrounded by industrial uses also Zoned M1. The nearest residence is located approximately 3,300 feet from the subject building to the The proposed physical therapy use is to take place within two units, seen shaded in yellow, of a seven-unit freestanding industrial building, seen circled here in yellow as well. No structural alterations to the interior nor the exterior are proposed. The proposed office will be open to patients five days a week, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Two employees are expected to work at the office during business hours. The applicant expects six to eight patients per day, with one patient being served at a time. The municipal code requires one parking stall for every 200 square feet of gross floor area for offices, such as physical therapy offices like this one. As such, a total of 13 parking stalls are required for the proposed use. The existing development has sufficient parking to accommodate the required parking for this use, as demonstrated by the original permit mentioned earlier, Plan Development or PD Permit Number 1132, approved by Ventura County in 1986. That permit indicated that the development proposed 11 more stalls than were required, given the provided mix of office and warehouse or manufacturing floor area. By reducing the amount of warehouse or manufacturing space assumed by that permit, the number of surplus parking stalls is also reduced by eight, leaving a remaining three surplus parking stalls. The 107 stalls of shared parking are currently provided on-site as originally approved. As such, the industrial center has sufficient parking to accommodate the required parking for this use. Finally, staff concludes that the request will not have a detrimental impact on the surrounding industrial area, nor to the public health, safety, or general welfare, as the project is a small-scale physical therapy office use limited to the confines of the building, and with the inclusion of suggested conditions, the project meets the required findings to approve an SUP. It is staff's recommendation to find the project categorically exempt from SEQA and to adopt the resolution approving SUP 2022-70220, based on the findings and subject to the conditions described in the resolution. I, as well as other city staff, are available for questions and clarifications. I'm not sure if the applicant is available this evening, she's been dealing with a family emergency, so I'll try to answer questions as best I can.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Vice Chair Newman. I have a big man. See, I just did it myself. Ms. Kendall, I'm going to ask you some questions that are probably that border as to whether it's you or the applicant. I visited on a weekday and a weekend and noticed that Aladdin Air Conditioning on the weekend used a large number of the spaces near where this property would be. I believe that they're only using that during the weekend, though, which would not conflict with the use during the week for this business. Is that true?
The hours for the business are Monday through Friday. I attended, or attended, I visited the site during the week and didn't, I noticed some Aladdin vehicles, but not nearly what you're describing. There was plenty of parking still available, so no, there should be no conflict, to my knowledge.
And from the report, it looks like they're only having a few people per day total, correct?
Yeah, two employees, it sounds like maximum, and one patient at a time, so very limited footprint.
And I think there was indication to be really very little or no tenant improvements, so it was not a whole lot of construction and other things would be necessary.
Correct.
What's it being used for now, if you know?
I believe it's used for a different type of medical office use. I'm not sure exactly what type of use that includes, but the required parking, or the parking required does seem to be far exceeding what they're actually going to use.
And I'll ask the question that usually gets asked in this situation. Does this set a precedent that every other space in the unit would have an easier chance of getting some kind of modification in the property?
No, any proposed use would need to be reviewed for compliance with the code. This use just happens to be one that requires a special use permit, and that's why we're here tonight.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Bus, do you have anything? Nothing, okay. Should we check to see if the applicant is on Zoom? She is, okay, terrific. Do you state your name and city of residence, please? Ms. Cooper, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, it's your turn.
Okay. State of residence is California, City of Thousand Oaks.
Did you have anything to say about your application tonight?
No, sorry, I just chimed in, I'm dealing with a family situation right now. So I'm just catching up.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for her? All right, thank you. And I do not believe we have any public speakers for this item. Okay. Any other comments from staff?
None at this time.
Commissioners? Okay, then I think we close the public meeting, and I'm opening the floor up for discussion or emotion. Commissioner Lanson?
First of all, it's nice to see Mr. Holt in chambers, by the way, so good to see you. I would suggest we move to adopt the resolution approving Special Use Permit, SUP 2022-70220, based on the findings and subject to the conditions described in Attachment 4.
Thank you. Will the secretary please prepare us for a vote?
Commissioner Bus?
Aye.
Commissioner Lanson?
Aye.
Vice Chair McMahon?
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Commissioner Link and Chair Newman absent.
Thank you. And I have to say this, any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the community development department within 10 days. And then we can move on to Item 8, Department Reports.
There are none.
There are none. Okay, and Commission comments, now is the time for Commission comments and/or any AB1234 reports. Are there any comments from my fellow commissioners? Mr. Lanson?
I just wanted to comment on a recent thing that happened, and there was a lot of accolades that were well-deserved by Jackie Irwin and Henry Stern, and obviously our amazing city council with regard to Project Home Key, awarding a $27 million fund with regard to the quality in being converted to a long-term homeless facility. But I have to say, the fact is that all of the documentation that had to be submitted, all the boxes that had to be checked, all the necessary things that had to be done, were done by an amazing staff that made sure that we had the best chance of getting that funds. And so many times, I know people get very frustrated that they think staff is not doing their work, they're doing their work. They did a fantastic job on this. We were able to get a huge amount of funding for a really, really worthwhile process, and I just want to say thank you to the staff for doing a great job on that project.
I agree with you completely. Are there any other comments? All right, Item 10, Mr. Dugan, are there any follow-up items, announcements, or upcoming issues?
Yes, there are. On the September 13th City Council meeting, there'll be a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Action Plan, and basically it'll be also contracts for the Community Development Department for environmental consulting services for an EIR scope of work for Chappelle's Caneo Summit, and an amendment to the general plan consultant contract. Then on the 27th of September, there'll be an EIR contract scope of work for the Janes Marketplace Hotel Project. On September 12th, Planning Commission, our next meeting here, we'll have a public hearing regarding a special use permit for photovoltaic array installations for solar optimum for Takeda Pharmaceuticals. And on September 26th, there'll be a public hearing regarding a municipal code amendment related to SB 9.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? We're going to break a record. All right, thank you all. This meeting is now adjourned to the next meeting, September 12th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Have a good evening, everyone.
Well done. Well done.